All set? All right. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attendance?
President Dr. Reese?
Present.
Vice President Gennetta?
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Hanser?
Present.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Schaefer?
Yes.
Trustee Woody?
Here.
Great. Do you have any changes to the board agenda?
No.
Great. No scheduled public comment for Agenda Item Modering. That was item number three. Item number four is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Amanda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I get support? Colleen?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Markovich.
Yes, thank you. This is, oh, this is a little too loud here. This is just the best night for us because you're going to get to meet representatives of our teaching and our support staff that just present to us the ideal of everything we want our children and our staff people to be able to work with and expose themselves and deal with. I have had an opportunity to be in some of the classrooms and some of the programs and some of the places where these people have shown, and they have received amazing awards for that. And they have been humble and thanked all of their other staff and everybody else for their awards. But they have the heart for teaching, and I'm very proud to have Ryan Reed present these folks to you tonight.
Good evening, Board of Education, Staff and Community. Tonight I am here to recognize and celebrate our 2024 Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year County Level nominees. The Oakland County Outstanding Teacher of the Year Awards are presented annually to honor and reward teachers in Oakland County who have achieved through their efforts and example the highest standards of excellence in their profession. Oakland Schools has created these awards out of a conviction that a quality public education system is essential to the health and vitality of our community. The Betty Campion Distinguished Support Service Award was established in 1990 to recognize the many contributions support persons make to the learning community in Oakland County. Nominees of the Betty Campion Award are members of a local school district's support staff, including transportation, maintenance, custodial, clerical, food service, or classroom support and parent educators, who go above and beyond the call of duty in creating a supportive learning environment. Each school year, teachers and support staff across our district are nominated at the building level, our building to celebrate their outstanding teacher and support staff person of the year. I want to congratulate all of our building level Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year candidates. Thank you for your dedication and service to Oxford. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Matt Beasley of the Beasley Insurance Agency in LaPierre to join me at the podium. Thank you, Matt. The Beasley Agency is proud to offer insurance for educators through the Mi-Mit family. Mi-Mit was founded by teachers and has been serving the educational community for nearly 75 years. Mr. Beasley has brought a generous gift for each of our county level nominees. Now I have the honor of presenting our county level nominees for the 2024 Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Person of the Year Awards. When I call your name, please come to the podium to accept your certificate gift. So representing Oxford at the county level for elementary education, Mrs. Amy Weghorst. Congratulations to Amy. And representing Oxford at the county level for secondary and the winner of the Oakland County Outstanding Teacher of the Year Award, Mrs. Molly Durnell. Congratulations again, Molly. And representing Oxford for the Support Service of the Year Award, Mrs. Kendrea Schoenfeld.
Oh, that's okay. I was shocked, I'll tell you that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And everybody else. I should have organized this better.
Again, I just wanted to thank Mr. Matt Beasley of the Beasley Agency for the support of our educators and support staff and to our amazing, outstanding Teachers of the Year and Support Staff of the Year. Thank you so much for your service to our students, our staff and our community. We are so proud of you. Congratulations.
All right. Moving on to the other parts of the agenda, business stuff, so that was exciting. So thank you guys for coming. Item number six on the agenda, Board of Education Matters. So we have a bunch of field trip requests that came to us at the last meeting. We had the BPA field trip and DECA varsity football and physics. So if someone... Oh, BPA is coming for next. Oh, I see that, the B and A. Okay.
DECA football and physics.
Physics.
Yep.
All right. So item A is just a request for us to review for next meeting. And then item B is the Oxford Field Trip approvals that came to us a couple of weeks ago. So it was DECA varsity football and 11th grade physics. Do I have someone who'd like to? Heather?
You want me just to read out each one of them?
Yeah, each one at a time is fine.
Move to approve the OHS DECA field trip request to the International DECA Competition, April 26 to May 1, 2024, in Anaheim, California.
Do I have a support? James? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve the OHS Varsity Football Team Field Request to Covenant Hills Camp, July 29 to July 31, 2024, in Otisville, Michigan.
Do I have support? Amanda? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve the OHS 11th grade physics classes field trip request to Cedar Point, May 6, 2024, in Sandusky, Ohio.
Do I have support? Mike? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number C on our agenda is the Superintendent Search Site Visit Recommendation for Action. This is for the upcoming trip this Friday to Columbus for any expenses that we may incur. Any? Heather?
Move to authorize Superintendent Search Site Visit to Columbus, Ohio, and any related expenses, including hotel, meals and mileage.
Do I have a support? Amanda? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D on the agenda is our Board Committee Updates. We did not have a Finance Committee since last meeting or a Governance Committee, so Policy Committee, Amanda?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week in Policy Committee. As you remember, the last meeting, I had asked everyone to look through and make a decision on whether we want to stay with Neola or move to Trune. And we had, the Policy Committee had given forward some reasons for switching and what we thought I would like to recommend that we do move forward with Trune. And depending on how everybody votes, I would like to follow up with that, just a couple of housekeeping items.
Sure. Do you want to make a motion then?
Absolutely.
All right.
Move to contract with Trune Law Firm, PC, for School Board Policy Services.
Do I have a support? James? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'll comment now.
That's okay. Oh, sorry. Your discussion.
I just wanted to thank the Policy Committee. I thought this was great. I like policy and I enjoyed reading the notes and I like the way Trune organizes it. I think it'll be a good thing for us.
All right. Sorry about that. Is there any other comments? We're just rolling today afterwards. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. You had some?
I did have, and it depended on which way the board decided to vote on which plan we're moving forward with. So now that I know...
And what are you going to say to us?
Yes. So now that I know we're moving forward with Trune, Vicki and I have set up weekly meetings. They're Tuesday afternoons that we've set through, today we started through June. And we will be going over every policy individually and then from that point bringing recommendations to Policy Committee, which of course will then bring recommendations to the full board. So really, there's three layers here of what we plan to do to bring forward the new policies. So of course, anyone is invited if you would like to spend a few hours with us on a Tuesday.
Every Tuesday afternoon?
It's pretty much every Tuesday. There's one week that we had to do a Thursday. But they vary between 12 and 4. So if you would like to come. Outside of that, next week, we have a Policy Committee meeting, excuse me. So for my fellow policy members, if you could go through Sections 1000 and 2000 before our meeting next week, that's what Vicki and I went over this afternoon. And that one really relates to board governance, and we have to make a lot of decisions on that. So come prepared on Tuesday. And then what we also found going through the policy is that a lot of these also touch on governance. So fellow Governance Committee members, I would also like you to go through 1000 and 2000 before we meet and get an idea because some of these policies codify what we've discussed in Governance Committee as far as board member ethics, roles and responsibilities, the calendar that we had discussed of expected items. These policies touch on a lot of those things, and so we need to also make decisions on how we want to move forward with our materials in both. So everybody will be quite involved in this, and we haven't made the Governance Committee meeting date yet for this month, but hopefully we will soon. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. I have my own physical copy of the policies, and we will also be furnished a copy for Policy Committee and for Governance Committee so that for all of our meetings, we will have the physical copy to reference.
Any other comments on policies? All right. Moving on to the agenda. Curriculum and Instruction. We were presented last time with a Statistics Course Option, Personal Inquiry Project and Personal Finance Class for us to review and then if we were ready to approve. Mary?
I'll make the motion. Move to approve the OHS Statistics Course Options, OHS Personal Inquiry Project and Personal Finance Class Requirements as presented.
Do I have support? Mike? Any discussion? Don't want to miss it this time. That's okay.
I'll speak up louder next time.
No, that's fine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number eight, Lighthouse Connections Academy Address Change.
Good evening. The Lighthouse Connections Academy changed their physical address. They still have a mailbox in our board office, but their main office that they work out of had an address change, which then caused our charter, our contract that we have with them to have to be amended just for the purpose of the address change. We have to bring it to you for your approval. And Dr. Markovich and I have already looked over it, and we've met with them. It's just an address change.
Would someone like to make their motion? Heather?
Move to approve the Lighthouse Connections Academy Updated Contract and the Address Change as presented.
Do I have support? Colleen?
Support.
Any discussion? I know the contract was in there and I took a peek at it, too. So, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number nine on the agenda is Unscheduled Public Comments. Just as a reminder, on the table, we have the light system. It'll start blinking when your three minutes are about to end. It'll be green and then blink and it will buzz, just to let everybody know. All right. James, are you ready? All right. Andrea Jones? Ariam? Okay. I just want to go through a couple points in the Guide Post Report. In certain critical areas, individuals at every level of the district, from the board to the superintendent and his cabinet to the Oxford High School administration and staff, failed to provide a safe and secure environment. Although only the shooter is guilty of murder and assault, his parents will be tried for their gross negligence with respect to their son. The district was responsible for keeping Madison, Tate, Justin, Hana, and all of the other Oxford High School survivors and students safe and secure at Oxford High School on November 30 of 2021, but failed to do so. It is tempting for the district to see this tragedy as a random event, tragic but unavoidable. But if we accept these killings, however vicious, however tragic, as somehow random, inevitable and unavoidable, the pain will continue. But the opportunity to do something about them before and not only after the fact will have been lost. I think we've been lost. We believe that the district's senior administration bears the most significant responsibility for the district's failure to implement an appropriate threat assessment and suicide intervention process. First, the superintendent and his administrative cabinet failed to properly communicate the district's threat assessment policy to building level administrators, let alone ensure that the policy was being followed. Second, the superintendent and his administrative cabinet failed to adopt threat assessment administrative guidelines, which would have required team members to receive sufficient training, defined the low threshold that would trigger a threat assessment, and created a written process for conducting and documenting threat assessment. Third, the superintendent and his administrative cabinet failed to notify building level administrators of the existence of a threat assessment form, which was available on the district's website, and direct those administrators to use that form at their schools. Fourth, the superintendent and his administrative cabinet failed to ensure that there were trained threat assessment teams in place at each school, led by a principal and including school mental health professionals and school resource officers. Fifth, the superintendent and his administrative cabinet failed to ensure that the district's suicide intervention guidelines were updated, directing that it is imperative for school mental health professionals to ask parents whether the student has access to firearms. That's a lot. That's five points of failure. Thank you, Andrea. Renee Uppham?
Good evening. I wasn't planning on coming tonight or speaking. This is my second school board meeting today that I'm speaking at. I was in Lansing today and spoke at the Michigan Schools Board of Education meeting with their school board and the Michigan Superintendent of Schools. A few of us were there in Lansing and spoke with them. I wasn't planning on coming, but I wanted to share my day with you. We watched the Oxford shooter's parents' trial in the car before the board meeting in Lansing. Difficult to watch, but necessary. And then we watched the Michigan School Board meeting taking place as well, at the same time in the morning. A school board member there brought up a resolution about school immunity. Changes need to be made to school immunity, obviously. Look what happened here. And the resolution was voted down, two for, the rest against, but it's a start. And then we got to speak in the afternoon. We went for public comments. And we talked about, I talked about my son, his experience here, my experience here as a teacher. I talked about the fact that Oakland County Schools and Lansing, Michigan, the state of Michigan, has been missing in action from Oxford. I talked about how they've abandoned Oxford kids for two and a half years. What's interesting, I learned that most board members there have not read the Guide Post Report. Two members on that board were very interested in what we had to say and brought up lots of conversation about Oxford. One in fact talked about how there's no accountability and is wondering why. The person, we were lucky enough that we spoke before the Oakland County, I think her name is Wanda, the Oakland County School Board person was speaking about safety in Oakland County schools. And she had a big presentation about, kind of bragging about all of the safety efforts they had in place and how well recovery has gone in Oxford. She had Oxford actually in her presentation. We didn't know she was speaking. So we were lucky enough to go before her. So we took the wind out of her sails a little bit, brought things back to reality. And two school board members there were very interested in what we had to say. So this is an iceberg. We're chipping away at it. You could be a part of the solution. You could chip away at this, too. You could join us. You're choosing not to. In moments of crisis, leaders stand up. Don't tell me that you care about kids when you are silent and let families go with unanswered questions. Do not tell me that you stand for kids. I don't believe you.
Thank you, Renee. Danielle Crozet?
Good evening. Much like Renee, I did not plan on being here tonight, actually. We just raced in from Lansing, and I had the pleasure of attending and speaking at the State of Michigan School Board meeting as well with Andrea and Renee. And I focused on explaining the impact of the tragedy, not only to my daughter, but to the victims' families and to all 1,600 students and staff in the Oxford School District. We discussed the ongoing negligence in a number of recovery decisions made. I discussed and reinforced the fact that three parties are to be held responsible and accountable for this tragedy. The shooter, which is done, the parents sentenced today, and that leaves the Oxford School District. Hopefully, all of you also watched the victim impact statements today. I think Buck Mir made it very clear, and we stand behind him and all the families. And again, all 1,600, accountability is not done. You cannot wash your hands of this. As a parent, as an advocate, I am still seeking, along with many others, a state-driven investigation that provides all of us the answers we are seeking from start to finish on the tragedy. We are seeking legislation to require independent investigations and after-action reports immediately following and eliminate any ability for investigations to be obstructed by employees or any local entity, including insurance companies. We are seeking statewide threat assessment policies. I requested that the state send a third-party recovery specialist to audit and help us course correct our recovery plans. I have asked for actions to reform governmental immunity and reminded them that in Colorado, it was done in two years after a school shooting. We are at two and a half years. We are 25 years from Columbine. We have learned enough. It's time to stop researching. It's time to take action. Accountability is not done, and I will continue to come here and fight for it. And the last thing I will say is there are seven, six, seven months remaining in your term, Mary and Heather, and it is plenty of time for somebody to step in and make some positive change on this school board. Thank you.
Marissa Prince?
Good evening. I've been following the Superintendent Search process, and I just want to commend the board on the transparency that's been provided. I feel like we have two good candidates, and I look forward to seeing who is chosen. They both seem ambitious and eager and qualified and skilled. There was a question asked of both of them during the recent second round of interviews. So it was, there were five questions asked, I think, five or six. And one of them that the board chose to ask, I assume you all agreed on it, was about like how you handle a community that spreads mistruths about the district. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, how you guys chose this question and how you decided it was really important, and if you think that this question, by asking it, contributes to further unity in our community here or contributes to further division in our community? I think James is the one who asked it. I don't know if he wrote it or not. Perhaps a better question would be, as superintendent in Oxford Community Schools, how will you promote a culture of honesty and ensure that administration always tells our school board the truth? Because we have a school board president who resigned and a treasurer who have told us in press conferences and things that they were lied to by administration. So it's all very confusing as a parent. And so I care more about how a superintendent is going to make sure that his administration and cabinet is honest with you guys and less about how he's going to handle a terrible community that spreads mistruths all the time, allegedly. Finally, since the light's on, I'll just quickly thank all of our dedicated staff that provides a safe and supportive learning environment for all of our students, often amidst and during their own recovery. And I'll acknowledge that today was another challenging day for many in our community. And I'll acknowledge that the families of our victims, our four families that we all care so deeply about, are again asking for answers and a further investigation into what happened to their kids. They want to know more, and the only thing standing in the way of that is all of you.
Mark Gillum?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. These are the children murdered at Oxford High School. Hannah St. Juliana, Madison Baldwin, Justin Schilling, and Tate Mir. May their memories always be a blessing. The failures leading up to November 30th have yet to be addressed in this school because these board members have been blocking our Attorney General and the Department of Justice from doing an investigation. There has not been one investigation by law enforcement, only an incident report from the High School Resource Officer, Mr. Lowert's department. Let's remember that Mr. Lowert dismissed the warning about the shooting from State Police OKA Safe Program before November 30th. When will you make an official public request to invite both agencies into this school for a proper investigation? Okay, I'll take that as a no. So, I'm recommending to our community that every one of you get removed. And we will remain at war with you until this is addressed. We're going to stand with the victims' families because this is an injustice, not just to the families and the victims, but to this entire community and to every student that attends this school. I've heard rumors that the Board is discussing the removal of a scheduled public comments time because it's not serving your purpose. Well, this isn't a surprise, considering your efforts to silence the community and lock out emergency services from local, state, and federal agencies, including critical incident stress management for our children. Why isn't that being discussed in public at a public meeting? If you're going to make a change to the structure of this, why isn't that being done in a public setting like this? So, you're still doing your closed sessions of planning. That's supposed to be done here in an open session. Now that the first three convictions happen, this community is organizing with the victims' families to hold this organization accountable for your failures, leaving four children murdered. Instead of removing people like Jim Rourke and Steve Wolf, you gave them promotions. While Mary Hanser and Heather Shaver mocked this community with their presence, and our finances are now in distress under the control of Vicki Markovich, is it time for a state to appoint a financial emergency manager to save us from your bankrupt mindset? Does anyone here on the Board know what the first trauma response is? Nobody? Nothing? You've been in here for all these years since the shooting, you don't even know? Could you maybe try one? It's denial, and that's where you're stuck. You're in denial.
All right, item number 10 on the agenda is our Scheduled Events. I want to point out there's a Safety Forum on April 27th, or 22nd here at Lakeville Elementary, and it's my understanding District Safety Committees will be here as well to answer questions. Number 11 is Administrative Clarification. Anything, Dr. Markovich?
No, nothing.
Any final Board comments? Can I just ask about the April 22nd Forum? Vicki, do you have any more information you could share with us about the format of that, what to expect?
It'll be very similar to the listening sessions that we held earlier this year on other issues that have been held in the past. We will have a panel that will be presenting, and we will have representatives from the District Safety Committee, representatives from the Parents Safety Subcommittee. We will have, obviously, Allison and myself to speak to where the district is going with the things we've put in place. We will be introducing our SRO officers. Allison, did you find anyone else?
Forest representatives.
Forest representatives will be on the panel who are on ground security. And the panel will do a brief introduction of themselves to the group and the roles they play, and then, it will move into a listening session format where people in the audience will have opportunities to bring forward their questions, concerns, and statements.
Do we know what time?
I believe it started at 6:00, Allison, or 6:30?
6:30 to 7:30.
6:30 to 7:30.
Thank you.
It will not be televised. We want people who are not comfortable speaking to TV to be able to speak. So, as our other listening sessions, the format was not televised. Very sorry. They won't have you with us. This won't be either.
One last question about it. I'm envisioning a presentation, right? There'll be some sort of, will there be a communication to those that can't come in person?
Yeah, why not publicize it so the community can listen?
No. I mean, this will be like the listening sessions, which means they will come in person. And the interaction is designed to be interaction in person?
It should be public, just for the record, Vicki.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Oxford High School Team 2137. Did I steal your thunder mic? Well, you can share them on too. They had a great performance last weekend at States up at Saginaw Valley State University. They did make it to the playoffs on their field, but they lost in the first round. But they did receive an invitation to participate in the World's Event in Houston. We had already done that field trip, just in case. We had already approved that. And so, they will be going to Houston next week. They were able to get hotel rooms from a team that wasn't going, so they've got it all worked out. So, congrats to Team 2137.
That's wonderful. Any other final Board comments? All right, guys, enjoy the weather. Meeting adjourned.